Congratulations to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation and under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence please. Thank you. Welcome to the Chelsea Troy Township School Corporation regular meeting of the board and trustees, Tuesday, October the fourteenth. All members are present. Adoption of the agenda Tuesday, October fourteenth. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, aye. Reports, William Tell Elementary.
The report was emailed to you earlier today.
Next up, Chelsea Junior Student High School. Mr. Andrews, you have the floor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll start off referring to Mrs. Billy, and she brought two guest speakers tonight, so I'm sure we'll hear from Kansas in my slot, but there's a few things I have to add. Mrs. Billy, guys will come upstairs, please.
I'm Mrs. Billy. I teach health science at the high school, CNA, dual credit with Ivy Tech, so I teach principles of healthcare, CNA, and two medical terminology classes. They, these two are two of my students that went through the class last year and are currently using their CNA to work, so I wanted them to talk a little bit about the program. We work well with Oakwood and Perry County Memorial Hospital. I started taking them to the hospital last year because they had been going to the hospital for a while, and I wanted them to see all aspects of healthcare, not just the nursing home, long-term care. That's what the state requires us to do. So I send them through physical therapy, through wound care, the emergency room, surgery, anywhere that the hospital allows to go, I'll send the students in so they can get that exposure and experience. This is Addison Walmeister and Lexi Lane, and they're going to talk to you a little bit about their experience with the classes.
Alright, so good evening, everyone. The class was one of the best things I could have done for myself, taking that class at my school and gaining experience with hard work taught me so much. Mrs. Billy was an amazing teacher, and having her on my side encouraging me made me believe I could do, I could accomplish difficult things. The CNA class was challenging, but it was also incredibly rewarding. Going through it was one of the hardest things I've ever done, and the night that I get to go out into the world and help people makes it worth it. I'm so thankful that our, our school believed in this program and gave us the opportunity to take it. Having my license has been an amazing, has been amazing, and I get to help people every day.
Here, good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Lexi Lane, and I'm a senior student athlete at here at Chelsea High School. Tonight, I want to share my experience with the CNA course offered at our school, a program that truly changed the course of my future. When I first enrolled in the CNA program, I wasn't sure what to expect. At the time, I thought I wanted to be a dentist and was simply taking the class for the experience. But as the year went on, my opinions changed. At the start of the course, we learned the foundational skills like how to interact with the residents, recognizing the signs and symptoms of common diseases, and following essential safety procedures. All of this was taught through our CNA textbook, and along with that, we had 72 hands-on skills that we learned through the clinical experience. About halfway through the year, we began helping at Oakwood, where we put our training into real-world practice. We spent time assisting residents and applying what we learned in class. At the end of the course, we had to pass two different exams, a written test covering the material on the book, and then a clinical test demonstrating the skills we had practiced throughout the year. I was able to earn my CNA license, which has led me to working in two caregiving roles. First, I'm employed at Oakwood as a CNA, where my daily tasks include bathing, feeding, changing, and supporting residents with their everyday activities. I also work as a private caregiver for a member of our community, providing care in their home for four days a week. Once I started working with residents, I realized that healthcare, not dentistry, was where I truly belonged. I love the fast pace, the human connection, and the opportunity to make a difference in someone's day. Because of this experience, I now have plans to attend Purdue University for nursing, and I'm even considering a career, starting a career as a CRNA, a certified registered nurse and estheticist. To anyone who is unsure about their future or simply wants to gain valuable life experience, I couldn't recommend the CNA program enough. It teaches respect, builds resilience, and helps someone find their true path. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to admit that she's a, she's a hundred percent?
First part of.
What's that?
She has a lot of.
No, they're not smarter than we are. Kudos on that. But no, Brittany's at a hundred percent. At Chelsea, every kid, pray for them all, if they're in the CNA class, they take the state test. At least she's at a hundred percent pass rate. That test, she'll tell you it's not easy. When it comes down, it's not to the schools, it's to the state, and in the medical field, I mean, you have to pass it, or so, hey, you know, let's come back tomorrow, you know. And they, those kids are stressed, and I do feel for them sometimes, but also get set ready for the real world. Another thing she's really brought is the outside in for connections. And, you know, like, you see, it was just basically CNA, not just CNA, but CNA, she's expanded, you know, like you said, she's thinking about dentistry, there's physical therapy, like, just go on and on and on, the people she's brought in, all these kids. I love them, they'll listen to the real-world people probably more than what they were us, right? And that's been huge, so, thank you, guys, appreciate it, probably both of you guys. Moving on, we had, I was going to say thanks to the key club, they've raised over thirty-five or three-six-hundred cans for cancer drug, and that's huge. That's, that's pretty awesome. The kids came through elementary, I didn't think they were much a kickball guy, but it was very bad, and the kids they brought in. John Lyons, a few years ago, started student leadership committee through the N S A Athletic Association, and they have really promoted and pushed inclusion. So last night, they had their first kickball game with kids, students with disabilities and other students who were in the first kickball game last night, all these people. So I just want to thank that kids, I mean, it's kid-driven. You don't go to, so, hey, I want you to do this or that. It's kid-driven, student-driven. That's awesome, I really appreciate that. Lastly, it is with the farm table, John was there, he brought us a table, I appreciate that. It was Mrs. Cleeman and Mrs. Higginson. I brought some pictures, all these one in colors, I know, so, Mrs. Higginson brought her Cal Lucy, like, milking farm. But very little, the kids decided to bake a cake, and Nora Pickens did a cake platter, patter, there's a cake platter in culinary arts, they made it, auctioned off two cakes, and it was well over $200 to bake it on, and they went straight back to them. Our kids, they busted tables, they did everything. This is a volunteer basis, right? And every year, she has to, she, the kids don't take so many, they stayed the whole time, they're there early, they stayed late, and that scene was, we had banned that night, they made so much fun that weekend, it's soccer every day, and all that. Congratulations to P A C girls, they went P A C in cross-country, congratulations. Those kids work hard, and I'm just amazed, I can never run that farm, so I always have to take my hat off to you guys, so, but I'm blessed to work with such great people, great kids. Any questions? Thank you, guys, thank you.
Next up is the report from the county redevelopment commission, they had a meeting last week. At the Forest Canton subdivision, half the lots are now sold. So the redevelopment commission was looking at some future projects. We approved up to $300,000 of excessive TIF money from the Webb Will TIF to fund waterline, beating off the law pockets, water tower down for fire suppression, so we felt that was money well spent on this new project that's coming up for Webb Will's 200,000 square foot expansion. All good. It'll be all.
How many people are living in these houses in there?
Yeah, I think six of them are occupied now. There's four houses going out, and we sold two more lots last year. All good. Increases its asset valuation in Troy Township, which aids our school. That's all I need. Next up, communications from the public. Julie Hess.
Yes, where do I need to stand so people that are on the live stream can hear me?
Right here by the.
Yeah.
By that chair there, by that chair.
I'm just going to sit down, so I'm reading from my computer. Alright.
Just sort of about your public comments, I mean, I think you have.
About three minutes.
About three minutes.
I'm Julie Hess, mother of a student at William Tell Elementary School. I'm speaking today with our family in attendance because it is important for our story to be told to the school board and community. I want you to know how a child is treated when they find and report a threat at the elementary school. Our child did the right thing, he saw something at school, he told his teacher, he told his dad. We thought it was going to be a normal school day on Monday, September fifteenth. The school never alerted us before, during, or after the events. Only select families received communication from the school. Many boys were detained and questioned in the office that day. Our child was pulled out of class, missed class time, missed recess, and was forced to eat lunch in the office. He was questioned in a room with five adults encircling him. These adults included a police officer, three elementary principals, and the superintendent. His I-don't-know answers were not respected, and he really did not know. He should have said, "I am not talking to you like this, I need my mom and dad here, I want to go back to class, am I free to go back to class?" We had to go to the police station to watch body camera footage of our child. In the video, our child cried, shook, put his head down, I've never seen him shake that way, his arms, legs, head, and body. No one at any time said, "This is enough, we should stop, this isn't right, we should call his parents." Not one person spoke up, not one person made it stop. The school claims they were interviewing him as a witness and not as a suspect of a crime. Before he walked in for his first interview, an adult stated, "Get creative with it, that's the best part about kiddos." There are other questions and statements directed at him. Do you know what expelled means? If you come forward, or whoever did it comes forward and apologizes, you know that's the right thing to do. You're probably really, really nervous, aren't you, because there's lots of police today, right? And you're in the hot seat, this is a big criminal thing. There's adults that go to jail and spend a long time for making threats. My hope is that maybe you and some buddies, whoever's writing this stuff, that it's a big joke. Halloween is coming up, you play a prank or on Halloween. Do you think someone's doing this as a joke? Do you think it's someone being serious? We're going to figure it out, and that's going to be worse if we hear it from you, we hear it from them, okay? If you just let us know, it's better than us finding out later. Judge Karen or Judge Lucy, they're going to like it better if someone was honest and telling the whole truth. During his second round of questioning, now's your chance to tell us the real story of what happened. It's easier to get it off your chest and say everything because we're going to find out, okay? I think you have some things to tell us, don't you? Tell us the rest of it. Better to tell the truth and be honest, you'll feel a lot better when you tell the truth. I can tell you're really anxious, so tell us what you've not told us, the rest of it. Do I have permission to finish? Maybe thirty seconds.
Sure.
You've got a weight on your shoulders, that's really weighing you down, I can tell. It's just too much of a coincidence that you're in there when you're in there. So, we know, either you know who did it, or someone told you to go in there, and there's something more to the story. Why are you crying? Why are you upset? Nobody said you did it, but if you did, now's your chance to tell us. How come you're so upset? What makes you upset? What are you worried about? I can tell you're really upset and anxious. The video cuts off, I never see my child leave the room, I never get a phone call from the school. I did get a phone call a week later from a parent, she wanted me to know at her child's school hearing. The school admitted they had matched her child's handwriting to the threats on Saturday, September thirteenth, which was two days before my son was detained in the office. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Hess. The board has some things to talk about, and we will be getting back in touch with you.
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Hannah. Is there any discussion or additions?
You want to add the two?
They are, yes, there are two resign, yes, there was added two already, there were two resignations after the packets went out. That would be Jerry Hedinger and Emily Bebe, both from On Target.
There is no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Your business. Public hearing on lease agreement.
Yeah, Jacob McLean with Bose McKinnon and Evans. So, I'll go through kind of high level, the purpose for the public hearing, stop me if you guys have any questions, but this is just as a refresher, part of the authorization for bonds. You guys have had a few public hearings on this. We put out a notice in the paper, a thirty-day notice for this hearing. If you'll recall, when you guys issue bonds for larger projects, you issue them through the building corporation. The building corporation met earlier today and adopted a similar resolution. The resolution that goes along with this public hearing authorizes a Tenth Amendment to your lease. Every time you guys go to issue a bond, you either enter into a new lease or you amend an existing lease. This lease is kind of a block here with, with all these buildings, plus Legion Field. As far as timing, assuming you guys adopt the lease, the lease amendment resolution and execute the lease tonight, we'll put out a notice. We'll be back at your November board meeting to have you authorize forms of bond documents and have the building corporation do the same. And we will work with Mezaro and with London Woody Group, the bonds will be marketed, they'll kind of start putting together the marketing materials for the end of this month, anticipate a sale of bonds by the end of November, with closing and funds available in December. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and just as a refresher, the lease amendment includes not-to-exceed amounts. Once the bonds are priced, we'll have an addendum that will bring those actual lease payments down in line with the bond payments. There'll be maybe $1,500 more of lease payment than bond payment to cover things like trustee fees and some of those incidental costs, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions, or you can turn it over to the public.
Come on, the bonds.
So we authorized, because it's not-to-exceed, we authorized not-to-exceed twenty years for, for the term, and not-to-exceed twenty-six years for the lease term. So you guys would have the option to, if you wanted to do multiple series, so if only a portion of the funds were needed this year, you could issue that amount and come back next year and issue another. I think the plan is to actually issue probably the full amount before the end of the year, and I think the payoff, you guys will manage it, it'll be about a ten-year payoff, but for flexibility, we usually kind of go a little bit higher just to allow for that, so if something happens and you want to go longer, you can.
I think the thought was to not saddle future boards.
It goes along with what we've been doing, where we do a refi every three to four years for between six to $10 million to work on buildings, HVAC, so it's in line with what we've been doing.
And it's beneficial not to, we have some clients that we come in to do their work, and we find out they've done like a twenty-year bond and locked up their ability to do anything, and then something like a roof comes up and they've got to kind of scramble to figure out how to do it, but you guys have planned that out and really kind of left opportunities to issue as things maybe arise that you need, so.
Does anybody have anything for the public? Seems there is no public comment. This hearing is closed. Next up, consideration of a resolution of approving the lease amendment.
This is actually for both to approve, this is the end, this is the resolution sign.
Right now. Does anyone on the board have anything else to comment on, on the lease amendment agreement? Seeing there is no comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Oh, sorry. Do I have a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Ross. We will go again, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Jacob's going to grab your signatures because he's got to head back to Indianapolis, so. He's going to take care of that. Yeah, we'll take it.
Can't try to get home before midnight. I, you know, sometimes it's nice that there's a football game or something I can listen to, I don't know, I gotta look and see what, is the baseball game on tonight?
Yeah.
We'll see you next month.
Appreciate it.
Next up, I want to open the public hearing for the capital projects plan. Does anybody in the public have any comments on this bill and plan?
Keep in mind, too, the capital projects plan or the things that we would use are tax-generated funds for, so it could be anything from technology, equipment, and copiers, carpets, things like that, it's not the big projects that we're doing like the roof or the HVAC, this is the stuff that is a little bit more manageable, and we've got upgrades to facilities in there, HVAC controls, William Tell's carpeting, field lighting, and paving the gravel lot at William Tell, all the potential things we could do.
If there is no comments, we will close that hearing. Next up, approval of the capital projects plan. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the capital projects.
Discussion. Seems there is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries five to zero. Now I'd like to open a public hearing for the bus replacement plan.
Once again, the bus replacement plan, we rotate our buses in, the oldest are first out, and the newest have to wait. Right now, we're looking at potentially a new special needs bus or a full-size bus. Think we had budgeted for two, but with the changes to the state taxes, I don't know if we're going to generate enough to get two. Good thing about this is we don't have to buy two, we budgeted for them, we only get one, well, we only get one. So, any questions on that, let me know. So right now, our oldest bus is a 2009, it's bus sixteen. I don't know the mileage on it. That's an in-town route, so it's probably not as extensive as the ones that go out to the county. Yeah. So, we actually just talked to our distributor today, and he's got some off-lease buses that are comparable to what we would use, and he can either have them this year or he can hold them until next school year if it works better with our budget. So there are some available. I haven't seen seventy-eight passenger, which is what I look for, especially for in-town, because those routes tend to be a little more crowded. And the special needs bus that he has is only a fourteen passenger, and I'm not sure that's going to be enough for us to utilize, so we'll probably have to keep looking. The good thing is some of the bigger corporations will turn in leases every three, four years, and they'll turn in ten buses, and they're all the same, and we can get those at a pretty good discount, so we'll keep an eye out for those.
Is there any other comments on the bus replacement plan? If there is none, this public hearing is closed. Next up, approval for the bus replacement plan. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bus replacement plan.
Is there any comment on the bus replacement plan? There is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. The motion carries five to zero. Adoption of the 2026 budget.
This is the entire budget as we have properly advertised, including rainy day, debt service, education, and operations, will amount twenty thousand two sixty-one, twenty million two sixty-one.
Okay.
Sorry. I just missed three zeros. So, ask for your permission to adopt the budget.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the budget.
Keeping in mind also that we are point zero six percent less of a tax rate than we were last year, so actually saving the taxpayer a little bit.
That's his 2026, but this school year could be 2026 calendar year.
Next year. No, and they will cut that, too, yeah.
Lower tax rate.
Correct. We will, absolutely have a lower tax rate, one hundred percent.
The pockets, personal property coming back into the assessed valuation is a big, you know, seventy-plus million, and you add new homes, at least their own, plus eight million back into the assessed valuation, that's a lot, a lot, but helping everybody, we're grateful. No other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries five to zero. Resolution for budget transfers.
This allows us to transfer in between the funds and the categories if necessary. Once again, it's not necessarily CPF to education fund, it is the sub-accounts within the education fund where we may have budgeted X amount for salary or health insurance, and we need to ship some of that around. So, it just helps us balance the books, this allows us to do that.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we allowed the resolution for budget transfers.
Any discussion on transfers? There is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Resolution to consider a 2026 tax anticipation warrant.
Every year, we ask for the ability to do a tax appreciation warrant, this is operations fund, not education fund. We've asked for including interest of $100,000 to be applied towards debt service in the event we need it. We have never needed it, we have never used it, but it does give us that cushion if there's some sort of delay with the taxes or anything like that. So, we ask for your permission to, or your consideration on that resolution, however, it is very not likely at this point we will use it.
You said we've never needed it, how many years?
I think we've been doing it for the last five years, maybe? It's not something that we've been doing for the duration that I've been here, but it's been, we've been doing it for a hot minute.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the consideration of 2026. Sorry. I did ask them to stop, but I don't think they understood what I was asking.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Next up, William Tell Elementary School.
We have several recommendations for the elementary school, starting with the family outreach coordinator, Michelle Willyn. Homebound teacher in Sarah Duke, we have a student who's had some needs, and she's at home for a while, so Mrs. Duke will take care of that. Program assistant, Whisper Cronin. Evening custodian, Trinity Brown, and Vex assistant, Isla Apple. Those are the two new recommendations that I've put in front of you. Both of those, or all of those, I'm sorry, have their background checks on five, so we'd ask for your approval.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve all five of them as a group.
Any discussion on the candidates? There is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries five to zero. No recommendation?
Yes, I'm sorry. No, you're good.
Athletics?
Athletics, we have several coaching spots to fill. Eighth grade girls' basketball, Dani Lloyd. Volunteer assistant, eighth grade, Jamie Lloyd. Seventh grade girls' basketball, Chloe Carmen. Volunteer. Volunteer assistant, Ross Hendershot for the girls, seventh grade. Sixth grade girls' basketball, Todd Hendrickson. Fifth grade girls' basketball, Zach Hearts. Volunteer fifth grade girls, Laah Hearts. Volunteer assistant swim coach, Tony Miller. Fifth grade girls' basketball volunteer assistant coach, Jared Kleeman. Sixth grade boys' basketball volunteer assistant coach, Brett Wright. Sixth grade boys' basketball coach, volunteer assistant, Nick Wire. Fifth grade basketball volunteer boys, Joan Morgan. Seventh grade boys' basketball assistant coach, Matt Glenn. Eighth grade boys' basketball volunteer assistant coach, Andy Holliday. Eighth grade boys' basketball assistant, Matt Zabel. Volunteer assistant wrestling coach, Josh Nepper. And eighth grade girls' basketball volunteer assistant, Chris Axton. All of those have their background checks on file, except for Tony's. His is being processed right now, but we have not received it all. So when you make that recommendation, his should be conditional on that completion.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the athletic recommendations. I'm waiting on Tony Miller's background check.
Any discussion? See a lot of parents stepping up, is what I see there.
Just don't have coaching experience and experience in their sports.
A lot of athletes there. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Permission to advertise for CNA.
In your packets, I included a proposed job description for CNA at each building. We are seeing an increase in students that have minor medical concerns. I mean, this isn't, you know, severe stuff, but it could be anything from help with their diabetes to maybe even potty training. We're seeing some that aren't really quite there yet. Mr. Ramsey has brought some concerns here at the high school about just needing some extra help. But it's more than a program assistant, but less than a nurse. So develop that CNA position. We're asking for two five-and-a-half-hour CNA physicians to put in the building as a trial position. I generated the job description there. If you have any questions, I mean, it's all subject to modification. Brad, if you've got anything you'd like to add to that since this has been.
My life's like Malcolm needs to solve some diabetes and that feeding business. Anything like that, it's more important. Remember, we have one nurse that rated and that's even without health, being a great issue at the time. On cramps, you know, some kids that are reclining in health and who are going to do best. Also, to discover the best, I think it's only.
Right. It'd be an education fund position.
It's part of the path always.
Per day? Yes, so it'd be a part-time, no benefits, correct. Comparable to a program system. And salary and those kinds of things, but just with a little bit different job description.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the two CNA 5.5-long positions.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There's no action but a wellness policy for annual assessment.
Yes, so every three years, we are required to reassess our wellness policy. And actually, we just approved the policy in July, I believe. That was in that group of policies that we pushed through. But William Tell has the Martian Matters Group and they've got a wellness program out there that involves kids and parents, the food, the nutritionists out there. And they always look in and kind of massage that wellness policy. And then we're required to take our wellness policy and use this guide from the Indiana Department of Education to kind of make sure we check mark all the boxes. This will be given to our auditor in November, who comes down and audits our nutrition program. So it was provided for your reference just because they wanted to make sure before we saw that triennial assessment. So it's been provided.
2026, 2027 calendar.
In your packets, you had two calendars presented for the 2026, 2027 school year. There were a couple of options. One of them would start similar to what we did this year. So teachers would be in late July. Students would come back the week of Switzer Fest, go three days and then they were out. That gives us seven snow days built into the calendar with four after March, when we know we're going to be able to use them. And then we would also have three additional e-learning days to use if we needed to. There is though, because of the way the calendar falls, the opportunity to come back a little earlier and get 10 snow days. So the teachers, I gave it to Amber and she circulated it for me. And you were in favor of coming back prior to Switzer Fest and having the three days, which would be the fewer snow days total. But still, I think that's plenty. This will be more than what we had this year.
Plus these snow days don't include the.
Correct.
Online days are allowed, correct?
Correct. Yes, sir. So I have both of them for you, but at this point, I would recommend that we would adopt the calendar that is similar to this year. So the teachers would come back in July and we would start that week of Switzer Fest instead of waiting until after Switzer Fest.
Would the teachers overwhelmingly favor that?
The group that we have, we're getting.
We're here.
Yeah. You've said, you've said survey that before and it's pretty much split. It's three options, one-third, 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 so. Yeah.
If everybody wants to go back to the old days, we didn't start until the end of August.
Yeah, it's not an option.
Well, Chris and I talked about that also. You know, we had the opportunity to start after Switzer Fest this year, but next year it wouldn't be an option. So we can keep things the way we've been doing them or we can change it this year and then change back next year anyway, so.
Do you feel like coming in and then taking that three-day bird flight off the bat, just kind of get a chance to take a breath?
I think, yeah, it's nice. We get like the procedures done and rules and logins to the computers and things wrapped up in three days and then that Monday, we can hit the ground running.
Seems before 12 past two, you'll be using that schedule.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the same schedule. We need to stay on option two.
Correct.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah. Starting option that was. Seven snow days. Yeah, seven snow days.
Any other discussion? There is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. The motion carries five to zero. William Tell School Improvement Plan.
Anyway, the schools develop a school improvement plan along with their teachers. They use state data, they use testing scores, they use a little bit of everything to kind of focus on where they see the most need and then what they can address. We used to have to upload these to the state and then the state would warehouse them somewhere. And I don't know that anybody ever looked at them again after that. We no longer have to do that because we're not considered a performance-qualified school. Our scores are solid, our kids are improving. So we don't have to send this to the state, but we do still have to get your okay for each of them. So you have the William Tell Student School Improvement Plan in front of you and the next option will be the exact same thing for the junior senior.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the William Tell Improvement Plan.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Sorry. Tongue twisted. Lussey Junior Senior High School School Improvement Plan.
As I said, this one is also developed in cooperation with teachers, the administration, a little bit bigger kids, but basically the same general impact based on test scores and the like. We ask for your approval on it.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Lussey Junior Senior High School improvement plan.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Insurance trust appointments.
Tusk City Schools are part of a health insurance trust. It has served us well over the years, saved us quite a bit of money. Every two years, we are mandated to appoint or reappoint a representative of the trust. It is historically the superintendent of that corporation. So I'm asking for you to reappoint me to the health insurance trust as our representative.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint superintendent to the insurance trust.
How often do you meet with that? We typically meet three times a year. We actually have another meeting scheduled because we're looking at some options that might be able to save us a little bit of money. So we've asked the broker to get ahold of Anthem and give us some information on our claims and how we can maybe massage them with this. We're taking a 21% increase this year because we've had a pretty rough year medically speaking. Yeah. So we're looking at some options that can maybe save money on the front end to avoid those kinds of pains down the road. Historically, we've done really well. I mean, we've taken 3% raises, 8% raises. When everybody else was taking 20s, it's just, it's caught up to us at this point.
Can you convert that percent to a dollar amount corporation-wide?
The increase right now is $560,000 increase. Yes. Roughly.
The amount of people.
I'm sorry?
Spread them out, how many people?
113 valley buttons. That means anybody on the plan, not necessarily people who own the plan. So it might be me and my family, that's four. So it's spread throughout.
Significant values. Okay. We have a motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next, the building use for the Chel City Police Department Citizens Police Academy.
That is correct. Officer Leisner has reached out. They're wanting to use the William Tell back parking lot for Citizens Police Academy training using their vehicles. It includes emergency vehicles, a couple of driving courses, but they will not be doing high-speed, you know, drifting around the corner at William Tell. This will be very controlled in the parking lot. It would be from 5:00 until dark, he said, up at 10:00 PM on the request. We have the insurance from the city already on file from where they use our tools to train their lifeguards, so we've got the COI that covers them. And I recommend the board approve their use.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Citizens Police Academy.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Building use, Southern Indiana Power.
Annually, Southern Indiana Power has their annual meeting in our auditorium. They are asking for Thursday, April 16th of 2026. They come in around 5:00, they have their shareholders meeting, they're out the door. We typically waive that fee because it is a community service by the group. And I ask that you approve that also. We do have their COI on file, but it expires, so they know they have to get me into it before that. And they're very good about doing that. Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve that resolution pending that they definitely get the.
We'll stay on it.
Larry, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Again, building use, this time for the archery club.
Last but not least, the archery club is asking for the use of the auditorium and the gymnasium, the auxiliary gym for their annual contests and competitions. So the, if you allow it, tomorrow, I believe, they'll be in the auditorium for their parent and archer meeting and kickoff. Yes, that is October 15th. And then the events are March 6th and 7th of next year. And we do have an updated COI for the archery club. So I'm asking for your approval on that building use.
So we went to the auditorium tomorrow for the sidehouse and then with those in March were actual competitions.
Yes, sir.
It's a pretty crowded day.
It's big, yeah. They have lots of schools that come in, it's an all-out thing.
Possible nutrition facility being an asset for that. Eventually, maybe get them all in one go. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve archery for building use.
Any other discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Is there any other business before the board?
Just a reminder, fall break, three days.
In three days, is it?
No, in three days. No, not on these days. You're going to get lynched by these.
I thought they reached a week.
No.
Larry, we're supposed to let it out next year. That deal's taken only three days.
Fall break in three days. For a week, everyone have a safe and enjoyable fall break.
Thank you all for attending tonight. Shows you care about your school. There is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. There are a substantial amount of documents to sign back here for the budget. So please make sure you sign as you voted, which I believe were all ayes. And then Hannah and Tony, you have a couple of specifics for the budget as well.